All right, looks like time has come. Are we ready to record? All right. Oh, wow. What am I supposed to do with this? Planning commissioners use this because I've never used it. All right, we'll work it over. All right, we want to welcome you to our weekly meeting of the Board of Weber County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, the 24th of March, 2015. Wow, I think spring is officially sprung. It's beautiful outside. I'm afraid we're going to be hatin' it in about July, but for right now, it sure is beautiful. So, we appreciate all of you being here with us today and being a part of our meeting. We'll begin with our invocation, which will be offered today by Commissioner Ebert, after which the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Jared Anderson, our county engineer, and I will have the thought of the day.
Our Congress, Heavenly Father, we humbly bow our heads this day. Give thanks for the opportunity we have to live in this country and for the rights and responsibilities that it affords us. We're grateful for it. The citizens of this great county, we ask that you have loved them throughout this day, strengthen them and guide them in all the decisions they make. We ask that we will be guided in our decisions today, that your spirit will direct us to make decisions that are appropriate. We are grateful for the many blessings that you afford us from living in this country through Jesus Christ.
Sure. All right. There's a lot of things around us that we don't have control over, but I came across this thought talking about personal responsibility that made good sense to me. And I kind of enjoyed it. It's by a blogger with a blog titled Little Things Matter by a Mr. Todd Smith, and he says this. "When you take 100% responsibility for holding yourself accountable, your performance will improve, your relationships will flourish, your market value will soar, people's respect for you will skyrocket. You will be a great example for others to follow, and most of all, your self-esteem will grow." Thought that was a good reminder for me sometimes that even though there are factors out there in the world, sometimes we blame too often, and this is what I needed to hear about looking at things that I can do to make things better than myself. The thought. All right, to the fun part of the meeting. This is the Seal of Service that we have the opportunity to award today, and we're excited for Emily to receive this seal. I don't even know where to start with Emily. She is just a ball of fire and a lot of fun, always smiling. For those that don't know her, she is the first person that I see when I get to work every single morning. She's on the corner desk as you walk in the entrance. And she has always got a smile about like the one she's got right now, just from one ear to the other, and it's wonderful. Can we, Emily, can we have, we need the folks online to be able to see her when we're talking about her. Where could she stand? The podium? Will you come up to the podium? We want you to come, yeah, come up to the podium. Would you? See, this is hard for her, I know, because she doesn't like to be fussed over, but she's that great. So, every now and then, we get the opportunity to present this Seal of Service Award. And today, we get to present that to Emily Sawyer. So, let's see, who do we have that nominated her? That would be Ricky. So, Ricky, do you want to come up and present this nomination? And then, maybe we'll have some things to add.
Good morning, Commissioners. When you take someone who loves Disneyland, Hawaii, St. Thomas, Cruze's, Fruity Pebbles, Sriracha, and her mom and dad, you've got Emily Sawyer. In fact, her nickname is, can I share, that her dad gave her?
Sure.
Pebbles. So, I think we may want to start referring to her as Pebbles now. I just want to read, Emily's been in our office well over four years. The morning six?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Six years and has done tremendous work in our Elections Office and has come up and helped out with the front counter now for several years. And I just want to read a couple of the quotes from the staff who nominated her. And what you said, Commissioner Gibson, was right on the mark with a smile. And that seems to be a common theme running through this. Here's what some people say. "Emily consistently provides exceptional service to everyone. When helping the public, Emily is always professional and considerate. Emily always has a smile on her face and a giggle for everyone. She goes out of her way to help customers with all of their needs. She's especially cute with the little kids that are here for passports, calling them Bud or Buddy. Emily always makes everyone feel comfortable when she is helping them. Even on the gloomiest of office days, and even though the Clerk Otter's office really never has any gloomy office days, on the rare occasion that they do, Emily is a bright sunbeam that lightens everything up. She is always ready with a smile and a cheerful word for everyone that walks through the door. I would say that I appreciate Emily's adventurous spirit. I think she is fearless. I enjoy her smile and her great attitude. Customer service is a big part of our office, and I feel like Emily exceeds all expectations. That is why I feel Emily deserves the Seal of Service Award." She really does bring a lot of fun to our office, but a lot of professionalism and good service as well. Normally, when we put up a note on our door that says we will be closed for Christmas or whatever, you put a little wreath or a little Christmas tree, well, we put up a picture of Elf with Will Ferrell and a pretty funny quote that was really interesting and that people loved going through and reading that. And Emily was responsible for that. So, she keeps us all on our toes and really does a great job with our customers. So, I was really glad when our staff said, yeah, we would like, we want to nominate Emily because it's a fitting recognition.
Emily, what do you have to say for yourself? Yeah.
When Ricky came up, I told him, "Don't mess up," and so he just told me that, too. I guess just the main thing is that I'm so grateful. I know that there are so many people out here that are more deserving of it than I am, but I'm humbled that I have been nominated for this. It's kind of, it was really crazy. When Robin called up to tell me, I was like, "What?" It really blew my mind, but I just wanted to thank all the people that I work with because without them, I wouldn't have this smile on my face because they're really awesome. They are more deserving of it than I am. And I'm just grateful to work for the county. It's a really great place to work for, so thanks.
Well, Emily, you gotta stand there for a minute and let us rant just a little bit longer.
Okay.
I just want to add and express my appreciation. Like I said, it's wonderful. Every one of us has the need and the desire to smile and to have that joy that sometimes comes through no other way than just personal interaction. And I will tell you, having you be the first person that I see every morning as I walk in the door is a big deal to me. It is wonderful because you make my day brighter. You lighten up my day. And sometimes, there's a lot of heavy things on our minds, right? And having that smile just kind of makes some of them feel a lot easier and a lot better. And so, Emily, we're grateful. We're proud of all of you. It's fun to see all your office here, here to support you. They are great. As you said, they all do a wonderful job. But this is our opportunity to honor you, and we are just really, really grateful that you are here and that you work with us and we have the opportunity to spend time together. So, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication, for your efforts.
Thank you.
Well, that's all been said. Thank you. All right, now, do you have any family here with you besides your dad? I saw your dad.
My dad's here. He's my family.
So, would you like to come up and have your picture taken with Emily?
Yeah.
Would that be all right with Pebbles?
His name's Tom Sawyer, by the way.
Okay.
Tom Sawyer's here.
Okay, so we'll do that, but we'll just make this announcement that this is the Seal of Service that you'll receive. It's a nice plaque. It'll be great to hang somewhere prominent. And there's this beautiful little pin you get to wear. And I don't know what you're going to do with the $100 bill, but it's still crisp and clean and ready to spend. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right, everybody smile pretty.
Should be looking at.
One, two, three. Do a couple here. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
One of the best things that we do. I'm awful grateful we do it. Just by way of information, we want to make you aware that there might be some interesting changes, adjustments to, not to this particular program, but during the month of April for County Government Month, we have some other specific honors that we'd like to begin with. So, we're just going to leave you with that little tease, and we'll see you at our First Commission Meeting in April. And I think you'll be excited to hear some of the opportunities we're going to have. Okay, we'll move then to our consent items. Our consent items begin with item number one. Request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $564,530.58. Request for approval to ratify warrants number 319-093 through 319-348 in the amount of $2,522,932.70 dated March 17, 2015. Request for approval of warrants number 319-349 through 319-569 in the amount of $1,844,353.98. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on March 10 of 2015. Request for approval of ACH payment to U.S. Bank in the amount of $107,465.35 for purchasing card transactions made through the billing cycle ending March 16 of 2015. Request for approval of new business licenses. Request for approval to amend contract number 14-0642 Journal Technologies to add provisions for hosting storage. Request for approval to surplus a property located in South Ogden City. Request for approval to surplus a property located in Washington Terrace. Request for approval to surplus South Ogden City parcels number 06-019-0002 and 06-019-0010. Request for approval of change order number nine to the contract by and between Weber County and Geneva Rock Products for the Powder Mountain Road and Utility Project for the amount of $688,604. Request for approval of additional amendments to the Ogden Nichols Conference Center and Perry's Egyptian Theater Management Agreement dated October 6 of 2006. Request for approval of a public hearing on April 7 of 2015 at 10:00 a.m. to amend the operating and capital budgets of Weber County for the 2015 calendar year. And last but not least, request for approval to cancel the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners on March 31, noting that the next meeting will be held on April 7 of 2015.
So, April 7 will be our next meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I can give you a brief summary of the purchase orders and warrants. So, for the POs, fairly small run this for the past two weeks, $560,000. $282,000 was for an RFID system, the checkout system that the library uses. I believe that's for their new, the new library, which is 50% complete. And then, we purchased some vehicles. That was 50% of the POs, and then about 11% of the POs were $65,000 spent on vehicles for our fleet. As far as warrants, the week of March 17, we had a check run of $2.5 million, about 250 checks. Almost half of that went out to library construction. We also had to pay for the transportation at the landfill. That was $283,000 or 11% of the check run. 12th Street Construction and Lantern House were both accounted for 8% and at $200,000 apiece. This week's check run was $1.8 million, 221 checks. Little Weber Construction accounted for about $720,000 of that, which is approximately 40%. We gave out some Ramp Awards, $239,000 in Ramp Awards, about 13% of the check run. Weber Human Services, our monthly payment to them, $173,000, accounted for 9%. And the incentive fee to the Ogden Nichols Conference Center Management, that accounted for 8% or $149,000.
Great. Thank you, Ricky. Any questions on those consent items? Comments? Anything you'd like to see pulled off? Okay, if not, then we'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items as listed.
I second that.
Okay, motion and second then before us to adopt and approve the consent items as read. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, to our next item on the agenda, our action items. Item number one is a request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and Ogden City to fund safety improvements in the 17th Street, at 17th Street in Ogden and Wall Avenue to Ogden City's west boundary. And Douglas, if you'll come up and take this. This is one of the transportation projects that's funded through the COG, and we appreciate you presenting it to us today.
Commissioners, good morning. Thanks so much for your time, and it's always a pleasure to be here. If I may just make a comment, Mr. Chair, on this agenda item and the next agenda item. Both of these transportation projects were approved by the County Commission as part of the 2014 Annual Local Option Transportation Funds Application Process, where we asked you last year, I believe it was in November, to kind of accept the master list. And then, from there, we go into entering into individual contracts with each project. So, with that, this agenda item between, or funding agreement for 17th Street in Ogden City. Just a few comments about the purpose and need for the project. Currently, 17th Street between Wall Avenue and Ogden's west boundary is a narrow roadway with limited lakes of curb and gutter, and much of the infrastructure is in very poor condition. The project, the main project goals for this are to address roadway deficiencies, provide a broader and better-aligned collector roadway that is well-suited for future manufacturing and related development. And as well, the project will improve the intersection at Gibson and 17th Street. The local transportation funds, $387,500 from our Corridor Preservation Fund and $4,83,330 from our third-quarter cent sales tax for transportation fund. If you don't have any questions, Commissioners, we'd certainly appreciate your approval of this funding agreement or contract.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Douglas?
Well, this 17th Street, we travel down it fairly often, and there are a lot of businesses apparently that use a lot of large trucks, which that road is not designed for. So, it's probably a project that's been long in the wings and needs some.
There's specifically a segment in the Ogden section that deals with a major semi-truck issue with how the curve is designed. And as well, on the west end, eventually Marriott Sliderville will likely be improving their section of 17th Street.
You know, that's one of the major access points to our jail as well.
That's the gateway.
And it's, this is an important project for the city. I know that they have placed awful high priority on this. And of course, we value our relationship with them. I've just got to say, as a little bit of a broader discussion, it has been good as we have worked with the Legislature this year on transportation funding to hear the fact that we actually have one of the models, I think, in our county of how cities and counties can work together to accomplish these transportation projects. And I think this is a great example of that. You've got two cities and a county that have dramatic needs here and dramatic, and there's major impact to all three of those because of this project. And it just shows, I think, a good collaborative working relationship that the cities and counties can work together, bring these things together. And I think it became a positive source of momentum. Our example became a positive source of momentum for the changes that were made in the eventual transportation funding bill that passed the Legislature. So, I think our COG needs to be appreciated and thanked for their example and their hard work. So, I'm certainly in favor of this particular project. If you are ready, let's move forward with it.
63.
63.
I'll make a motion that we approve contract number 63 by and between Weber County and Ogden City to fund safety improvements to the 17th Street in Ogden from Wall Avenue to the Ogden City west boundary.
I second that.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve contract number 63 between Ogden City and Weber County. Is there discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Item number two, Douglas, is the request for approval for the contract by and between Weber County and Ogden City to fund the capacity and safety improvements for the Skyline Drive in Ogden, Quail Run Drive to 4600 South.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Actually, there are a couple of segments of Ogden City's portion of Skyline Drive in this area. Skyline Drive has, again, has two missing segments that have been included in the regional transportation plan or the long-range plan for a number of years. A completed Skyline Drive will offer a secondary north-south route to Weber State University and as well 36th Street. As well, the improved roadway would leave enough pavement width to allow for bicycling and other forms of recreation along this major corridor. Four of the major or primary project goals associated with this transportation project are again completing missing segment of Skyline Drive from Quail Run to 4600 South and as well, again, offering a secondary north-south route to Weber State, reconfiguring the intersection at Skyline Drive and Country Hills Drive, and as well, in conjunction with other missing skyline segments south, this project would connect Skyline Drive eventually to Harrison Boulevard. You're well aware that Weber County also has a piece of Skyline Drive in this area that we're funding from the same source and currently working on. So, with that, this project is being funded $50,000 from our Corridor Preservation Fund for right-of-way acquisition and right-of-way related costs and $2,950,000 from our third-quarter cent sales tax for transportation fund. And we'd certainly appreciate your approval of this funding agreement. If you don't have any more questions.
This just shows again that most of these transportation projects are not just one city. They are regional in nature, and that's why this process is so valuable. This will be a major, major piece to the puzzle.
I'll make a motion to accept contract number 65 between Weber County and Ogden City for improvements on Quail Run Drive, 4600 South, Skyline Drive.
I thought that was that 64?
That was 64. I got a head of myself.
I'll second contract number 64, as stated.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve and adopt contract number 64 between Weber County and Ogden City. Is there discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you again, Commissioners.
Appreciate your efforts on this transportation stuff. I think we're at an unprecedented time. We're moving forward in major ways with our transportation projects. We appreciate it. There's a lot going on. Our engineering department is staying pretty busy, and we like it.
All right, item number three. Request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Fremountain Trappers for the Easter Rendezvous of 2015. Jim Carter is our presenter. Jim, welcome.
Good morning. How are you?
Wonderful, Jim. Good to see you.
Good. Yeah, we're requesting a thing between Fremountain Trappers and Weber County for the Easter Rendezvous that's happening Easter weekend down at Fort Benetton, Chura. A great event.
Well, I just think that, I would like to read the activities they'll be doing out there because I think the activities are phenomenal. So, make a note here, and this is what's going to be happening this weekend out there. You have a little black powder shooting, then a little kid's game, then always the knife and hawk throw is always fun. Then, there's a mountain man and a mountain woman run contest, canoe racing, Dutch oven cooking contest, the flying pan toss. Now, that's always, you can't go wrong with a flying pan toss.
Depends on who's throwing the frying pan.
That's true. Candy cannon, ladies social, a kid's shoot, and then, of course, an Easter egg hunt. And that's all happening down in our park there. Jim's our park supervisor down there, and it's our park. And it's a great park. If you haven't ever spent time out there in our park out there, you need to. And it does say the Fremountain Trappers. It doesn't mean the trappers are locked up and they're trying to get free. It means they are Fremountain Trappers. So, you can get on your trapper stuff, your trapper clothing, and come out there, and it's a great event.
Great event.
And well-attended.
Very well-attended.
And you can spend the night, and there's a lot of stuff going on down there. So, anyway, it's just something that it's a great weekend down there.
If you dress in period correct clothes, it is free to get in.
That's correct. If you put on your loincloth, you can come in for free.
$2 other than that, if you want to come in. Kids under 12 are free.
Kids under 12 free. It's a great thing. So, I appreciate what you do with our rec department. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You missed the Easter egg hunt.
I got the Easter egg hunt. I said Easter egg hunt.
Good. I missed that part. I want to go to the Easter egg hunt.
There's going to be an Easter egg hunt.
Well, it's, we have such a tremendous history and heritage in our community. And that park, I don't know if people realize what's down there. I mean, it's hidden and secluded, and some people, I guess, go for an event here or there, but it's just an amazing place.
It's amazing. Every time that we have an event down there, that people say, "I didn't even know this place existed" down there. And the people that's lived here most of their lives have said that to me, and it's kind of nice.
It's been a great acquisition that the county was able to acquire from state parks a few, well, several years ago, and just do a tremendous job managing.
And there was a lot of cleanup that happened down there this last weekend, and it was quite a good project.
Right, and it connects to some of the areas where the county's doing some development and some areas over there. It's a really nice piece of property down there. It's a pretty large piece if you ever get down there. It's a lot bigger than you realize. But yeah, it's beautiful down there.
It's very nice. Very nice.
That's what's interesting and wonderful about this community here. We're so diverse. I mean, you can go from libraries and arts museums to ballet, to out to the rodeo, to a mountain man rendezvous. It's just, there are so many different.
A gun-shooting range.
A gun-shooting range.
Cover it all.
And maybe one day, an archery range. There's just such a diverse ability and activities within this county that really we truly are becoming, you know, a destination for our, just the many different diversity and culture and activities and outdoor sports, so.
Correct. There's a lot of events that are planned for the fort down there, and it's.
And what makes it happen is those who put the events together do such a great job. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, we, I had the opportunity to go out to the fairgrounds the other, on Saturday, to see the chariot racing. And I mean, it's just, it is so much fun to watch. Where else can you go and see this type of event in all its glory? I mean, it's just amazing. And the biggest challenge we had, honestly, is that we had so many events going on out there at the fairgrounds that people were on top of each other, and so, we were always trying to react and make sure that everybody's needs could be met. But it's a great problem to have when we have people that want to be in this community and events planned. It's just, it's tremendous.
With all the soccer and lacrosse that was going on.
Exactly. It's a hard decision. Do you watch chariot races or do you go watch the roller dolls? I mean, you know, you've got so much going on out there. It's great.
It's nice.
Okay, we're going to move on. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve contract number 65 by and between Weber County and the Fremountain Trappers for the Easter Rendezvous 2015.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve contract number 65 between Weber County and the Fremountain Trappers. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Passes. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. I hope to see everybody out there.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Take care. Item number four is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Lawana W. Malin, trustee of the Lawana W. Malin Trust, for the relocation of the common boundary lines between Weber County and the Lawana W. Malin Trust. Kevin?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to tell you that I do have some experience with the frying. First of all, I'd like to tell you that I do have some experience with the, with the frying pan toss. As a teenager, I watched my mother hurl. An electric frying pan at my dad. And it stuck in the wall. I still have clear vision so. I would be good at the frying pan toss. I don't think I could beat my mother though.
You'd be good at the frying pan dodge.
There you go, there you go. My dad was good at dodging it. Yeah, we're here today to ask for your approval on, on the contract between the Weber County and the Malin Trust. Regarding the property lines of the Malin property and the, and the county property that are. They're on the north side of the sheriff's complex. Next to the property that we, we purchased off Twelfth Street here about a year ago. There was some question on, on where those property lines really legally. Ended up. There were two monuments that showed quite a significant difference in, in where that property line was but. Devron and, and his group went out and met with Claude Malin. And went over that property layout. And the existing fence lines and, and all of that and. Came up with what I think is a, is a real good compromise and a final. Description of that property to, to show the, the clear boundary lines. So if you had any questions about that process. Devron is here and could answer those questions but. Mr. Malin was, was in agreement with where the, the decision was made to, to place the boundary lines and I think it works. Well for the county and the Malins.
Well, that's been a challenge for us. Cleared up and straightened out so if this is, if this does that, then that's probably what we ought to be doing.
I think it will Commissioners.
Alright.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve a contract between Weber County and the Lawana W. Malin trustee. For the common boundary lines between the Weber County property and the trust property. It's number six-six.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion then before us is to approve contract number sixty-six. Between Weber County and the Lawana W. Malin Trust. Is there discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously, thank you. Appreciate that Kevin.
Thank you and I, I just wanted to, to thank Devron and his group for their quick attention to this and getting this done. He's, he's been very attentive to it and I appreciate what, what he and the, and the surveyors have done to get this put together.
Great.
Thank you.
Kevin, you're not leaving are you? Stick, stick around for a while, I want to talk to you after the meeting. Okay, we'll move on then to Nate Pierce if you'll come up and I'll read this, item number five. Which is the approval of a quick claim deed from Weber County to South Ogden City.
Yes Commissioners, as you're well aware, we have over two hundred bits and pieces of property that we try to take care of here in the county. And a lot of them are of no use to Weber County, either in the short term or the long term and so we try to identify those. And come to you from time to time with requests to declare those parcels as surplus property. You declared a number of those parcels as surplus property in your common consent agenda and this is. A follow-up to a couple of those items that you approved in the common consent agenda. Item number five is a request for approval of a quick claim deed from Weber County to South Ogden and. In the map that we provided to you, if you look at this, this was given to Weber County in eighteen ninety-six by the Ogden Land Company. Which was for the future development of a road. And over the years, the completion of this section of the road which would be an extension of Adams Avenue has not come to fruition. And is not likely to come to fruition in, in the future. It has now been surrounded by property that is owned by South Ogden City. This parcel that we're discussing here is completely within South Ogden City's boundaries. And they have an interest in acquiring this and being able to use it to help in the development of, of that area there. It is, as we looked at this, when they came to us originally, they'd asked us to vacate certain portions of this. Partial of property and as we visited with them. It was both, we thought in our benefit and their benefit to just deed this over to them and let them use it in the ways that they see fit to develop this area. So we have before you today this request to, to execute the quick claim deed for the identified property. Be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Any other questions for Nate?
Nope.
Motion.
So is this a contract or is this just approval? I'll make a motion that we approve a quick claim deed from Weber County to South Ogden City as presented.
I second that.
Motion and a second then to approve the quick claim deed from Weber County to South Ogden City. As it has been explained to us by Director Pierce. Discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you Commissioners, I might add just for the record that that parcel of property that's identified. By legal description in the packet that you have and as part of the deed, does not have a parcel number associated with it. And so we just have the legal description in that document. This next item does have parcel numbers associated with it. These two parcels of property on forty-four hundred South Washington Boulevard. Were deeded to Weber County back in nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty-nine for the purpose of creating a roadway which would connect Washington Boulevard. And Adams Avenue in that area. Once again, these two parcels lie entirely within, within South Ogden City's boundaries. South Ogden City maintains the, the road in this area. And so we felt it appropriate to recommend to you that. We execute a quick claim deed transferring these, these two parcels of property to South Ogden City as well. And they are in agreement and are willing to accept them. Be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Are these partial, are these parcels?
How large?
Yeah, are they, are they just long strips like we usually have?
No, these two, it's kind of, it looks like a bulb. The roadway off of forty-four hundred South Washington is basically the width of the road. Then as it approaches the gully, it, it, there's a, there's a bulge there. And then right at the gully, the, the property line is there and then the bulb comes back in and then it's just the width of the road that connects into Adams Avenue.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion then that we approve the quick claim deed from Weber County to South Ogden City for parcels zero-six, zero-one, nine, dash, zero-zero-two and. Parcel zero-six, dash, zero-one, nine, dash, zero-zero-one-zero.
I second that.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve the quick claim deeds as read with those two parcel numbers. Is there discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you Nate.
Thank you Commissioners, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. Which is the request for approval of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners appointing Matthew G. Bell. As the Weber Area Council of Governments appointment to the Utah Transit Authority Board. So I will take a stab at this and Dave, you can help me through it if I miss it. Oh, okay, great. So as you know, we are part of the Utah Transit Authority Special Service District. Is that what it's called? Special Service District, one of those, something like that. And, and UTA has a board that is made up of several individuals who are made up in different ways but in this particular case. From the Council of Governments as a nominee. Our, our current representative on that board is Mr. Bob Hunter. He has decided not to seek reappointment to that board and so we had this discussion. In our Council of Governments meeting a couple of weeks ago or a month ago or so. And it was recommended that Commissioner Bell be our, our appointee. So the way this works is that each of the cities makes their, we, we discussed it in the cog but each of the cities. Or a majority of the cities signed as well on, on that resolute, I guess they, it's not technically a resolution but. Statement, whatever, saying that they approve the nomination and then of course the county does so as well so we'll send forward our, our. Resolution or letter in that regard regarding the counties. I don't believe that the cities take it back to their, I think the mayors have the authority to sign that, I don't know that they have to go on their city council agendas but for us, we, we do that so. Because we are specifically called out in a manner that's slightly, slightly different in the statute than the way the cities are so. Anyway, so we do this as part of our public meeting and make that nomination so. And, and my thoughts are, you know, since nobody else wanted to do it, might as well be Commissioner Bell.
Well, and as we just, as we went through this and discussed it, it's, we, we feel it's really important for that UTA representation. Because it is a regional or county-wide UTA program, organization that. A representation from the commission is probably appropriate. There's no competing interest with, with the county representation. And Commissioner Bell is our transportation liaison and so has a little wider knowledge. Of all the transportation issues that are going on within the county. And so UTA would seemingly feel fit as a tool in his tool belt in addressing those transportation needs and issues. So that's why we felt, you know, all kidding aside, that he was a prob, the appropriate liaison for the UTA Board.
Just to add to that, I think I, the one thing I forgot to mention is that this is, this seat also represents Box Elder County. Unfortunately, we don't have quite as much representation from the northern part of the state as we would like and so this seat represents. Box Elder and Weber Counties. There'll be some resolutions forthcoming from Box Elder Counties and such.
Yeah, three cities in Box Elder.
Three cities, yeah, not the whole county but part of the cities. Okay, well, let's move forward then. Does any, would anybody like to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we, the county commission appoint Matthew Bell as Weber County Council of Governments appointment to the Utah Transit Authority Board.
I'll second the motion, is there discussion? Okay, would you like to argue for the job Commissioner Bell?
I'm excited about it, I think this will be a fun, fun assignment.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item number eight. Ricky, come on up, it's a request for approval of the revised Audit Committee. Audit Committee Policy and Internal Audit Policies and Procedures.
Okay, thanks Commissioner.
Oh, I guess you don't really even come up, you're already sitting.
I can if you want. Well, much like Commissioner Gibson's socks, it's good to update things once in a while and so we are updating. Our internal audit policies and procedures.
Just because they look like they came from the eighties. They're still brand new, just so you know.
They're actually quite enjoyable.
Thank you.
We have two policies that we have put before you today. These have, these policies are both twelve years old. And we've made some changes and improvements. The Audit Committee has been working pretty hard. Over the past few months in, in preparations for establishing a full-time internal audit function. That the county will be, will be using and filling very soon. The, the first audit, the first policy and procedure that we are updating is in relation to the structure and functioning of the Audit Committee itself. This committee is made up of seven members. No particular division of the county government is overly represented. We tried to spread it out so that we have a good. Independent mix of, of individuals and we also have a citizen member. Who is a CPA and a member of Ida Bailey and Matt Taggart has agreed to fill that. And is doing an excellent job. We think it's important to have a citizen member on the board and for the board to, to be, sorry, for the Audit Committee to be as independent as possible so that nobody. Has the ability to influence where the committee looks, where we check to make sure that our, the county assets are being protected. The second policy and procedure that is being updated has to do with the internal audit process. And it deals with who the internal auditor reports to, how the. Internal audit jobs are decided. And how they're conducted and the reporting process through that. This is a good process. For internal audit, it's important to be as independent as possible. And in a government format, it's very difficult to find somebody to be an internal auditor and be completely independent. However, our internal audit function will report directly to the Audit Committee. And get their marching orders from the Audit Committee and that's about as independent as we can get in the county. And so we're excited for that. We're excited to see the process. We had some good applicants apply for this position that we're currently reviewing. And looking forward to implementing the revised policies and procedures and getting a, a good internal audit program. Staffed and functioning very quickly.
So just a couple comments I'd like to make is that number one is Ricky Hatch is our elected auditor. That's on his title. And he can audit anything in the county that needs to be audited. And he has those, those abilities to do that. And does when he, when, when time presents him, that he can do some of those things. The, this Audit Committee is gonna get together and they're gonna. Get a rotation schedule for specific things. We've been working on this for a couple of years trying to get this in the making and get this going. And when Commissioner Ebert came aboard, he made that a priority and we're so glad of that that we could start doing this internal audit. And this internal audit will be more than just looking at finances, it'll also look at compliance. And following policy and different things like that so. I think this will be a, a major, major step in Weber County. That we make sure that the money that's being spent and the activities that our folks are doing that we're in compliance with the rules. And the regulation and I, this is something that has been in the works and we're so glad to see this coming forward. I'm glad Commissioner Ebert has grabbed that and Ricky and they're, they're moving forward with that. So there's gonna be some great things happen. We want our people in the county to know that it's a, it's a positive step. We want things to be better in Weber County as we continue to do things. They get better and better here in Weber County and this will just make us even a. Things more transparent, things more accountable as we move forward so I'm really excited about that and I'm really glad that you guys are taking that on so. Thank you Ricky and Commissioner.
Commissioner Ebert, anything you want to add?
Well, I just want to just, to make sure everyone's aware that this in no way replaces our clerk auditor statutory requirements or abilities or authority at any time. All those are still vested through state law. When we have an issue that would rise to the level where Mr. Hatch would need to intervene, he's again fully vested, he's not inhibited by this new policy at all. But one of the things that allows us to do both externally and internally is have a little more transparency, a little more tracking. But one of the things as an Audit Committee we've talked about. Is the purpose of this is to evaluate our policies and procedures to make sure that, one, they're where they, they're supposed to be and two, that they are being complied with. So it's, it's as much of a tool for organizational structure and compliance as it is for anything else. And we strive diligently to create policies that are very transparent and. Will hopefully allow the public to feel like the way the money's being expensed, how it's being expensed. Both through what we do but how we do it and how we, how we spend money is always, is at the highest level. Of responsibility that it can be so.
Well, I, I agree, I, we're always trying to be as good as we can be in the county and be better. And look for those opportunities to improve and I think this is just an opportunity, you know, this, this position has come and gone over the years, right? There's been, sometimes we've had one and sometimes we haven't and. In fact, it's interesting to note, this is how we ended up with John Bond. This was his first position with the county many years ago. We've had some, some others that have not. Been as, as great over the years but we've, we've had, we've, we think that at this point, this is the right way for us to go and. And it's just another step of trying to do the very, very best that we can to make sure that our tax dollars are being spent wisely. And that, that they're all being accounted for appropriately. So I'm, I'm excited about. So I'm, I'm excited about it, I, again, I appreciate Commissioner Ebert for taking the lead on this, and, and, uh, and Ricky, our clerk auditor, for, uh, being a part of this as well and, and putting this all together, so. Unless there's other comments.
I could just add really quickly, this is made up also of John Bond. Um, we've had some, some, our legal advice from Mr. Wilson, or Dave Wilson, I don't wanna say Mr. Wilson, it sounds like he's Mr. Wilson.
He's still a mister.
And also, uh, who else was?
We have, uh, IT.
Our IT.
Call, and then HR Brad D.
And Brad D have all really contributed to, uh, formulating a very good, uh, plan moving forward for this and, for this position. So I wanna say thank you to each of the participants that have all brought tremendous knowledge and, um, contributed to it. So thank them, not just myself.
Well, onward and upward, we just keep looking forward, so we're grateful. Alright, let's go ahead and have a motion, bye Sylvia, thanks for coming, see ya. Next, uh, our motion then on that item?
Oh, is it no number or anything, Charlie?
They're eight point one and eight point two.
Okay, I request, uh, for approval.
All of us, eight point one.
Point one and point two.
Eight point one.
Eight point one and eight point two. I make a motion for eight point one, eight point two for the Audit Committee Policy and Internal Audit Policies and Procedures.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion then is to approve policies number eight point one and eight point two. Uh, revising the Audit Committee Policy and Internal Audit Procedures, is there discussion of that motion? Okay, is that a roll call, Fatima? No? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving forward, I love it. Okay, public comment, is there any in the public who would like to comment today? If so, come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and where you live. Did you hear that Fatima? Catching on slowly but surely. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is a closed, uh, well, which is to assign the Pledge of Allegiance and Thought of the Day for Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand and fifteen at ten AM. Let's see, Pledge of Allegiance, any volunteers today? Devron. You, sorry, you had the finger pointing going on, so you're, you're assigned, thank you, appreciate that. Our county surveyor, Devron Anderson. And, uh, Thought of the Day, remember who was last, it was this week, so who was last week?
I'd be happy to give Thought of the Day next week.
Okay, 'cause we skip over you anyway, right?
Usually.
Alright, Commissioner Ebert will give the Thought of the Day. Next on our agenda is a closed executive meeting.
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry. Did I?
No, go ahead.
I was gonna read that statement.
You can read it or I will at the end, either one.
I'm, I'll make a motion that we go to closed meeting, discuss strategy relating to penitent or intimate litigation, the purchase of real property, and the character or competence of an individual.
Okay, motion is second then to go into closed executive session based on the reasons stated below.
It's a roll call.
Roll call, vote all in favor, go ahead.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. That's okay, no, it's perfect. Okay, we are, uh, in our closed executive session, we'll be back to closing meeting.